Organizations, which we shorten and say ASPO, otherwise known as the President's Council. So a group made up of the president of each of the schools in the district. And we meet once a month with the superintendent and share ideas, get picture issues, and we sponsor a candidate forum whenever there are more candidates than positions that are open. So we are very glad to have you tonight. Tiny bit of housekeeping. If you want to ask a question, write it down on a card, raise your hand, and one of the presidents will come and collect it from you and take it back to our table where they're sifting them and putting them in categories, and we'll get it up to the moderator. If you don't have a card, raise an empty hand. We'll bring you a card. And we'll try to get all the information that you want to get from our candidates tonight. Before we get started anymore, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I can stand up. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to welcome our moderator tonight. We are so excited that we have Dr. Mark Myers. He has moderated this forum before, and so he knows more about it than any of us presidents, which we're very glad to have him here. He's a former dean and a current professor at Xavier University. During his career, he has taught and coached at the high school and college levels. In 1999, he led the Rowan University Women's Basketball Team to the D3 Final Four. That must have been a highlight. Is that true? One of the presidents that's not here tonight, we stick, quote the bio, and I didn't write it by Mark. So now we know what great research Brian did. So Mark, though born in Florida, is now a Cincinnati native, who has spent time in Cincinnati visiting his extended family. He returned to the Queen City in 2007 to serve as the dean of Xavier's College of Social Sciences, Health and Education, now known as the College of Professional Sciences. He recently returned to teaching and is now heading up the MED in Educational Administration and on the faculty for the new Doctor of Education and Leadership Studies. The program prepares professionals to go out into the world and make a difference in whatever role they've chosen: the school system, healthcare network, a not-for-profit government entity, or private enterprise. So, Dr. Myers, thank you so much for leading us, and will you please make him welcome?
Leaving the Final Four, that's tough. So now we're going to start off with each of the candidates introducing themselves. In turn, we did a random selection. So Mr. Ballen, you are leading off for us this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight. I'd like to begin by thanking the PTO for organizing this event and thanking Dr. Myers for moderating this evening. I'd like to begin by prefaceing that tonight, when I talk about the accomplishments that I've been part of over the last five years, I mean that as part of a five-board member team, our administration team, and most importantly, our educators. This is not about what I've accomplished, but really what we've accomplished as a team. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Paul Ballen. My wife and I moved to the district about 13 years ago. And like many of you, we move specifically for the outstanding academic performance, growth, diversity, and opportunity for all students. We have two children, Emily, a seventh grader at the junior high, and Rachel, a fourth grader at Montgomery Elementary. Professionally, I've worked for Nalco Water for 28 years. And currently, I am the Global Director of Technical Sales for our transportation group. My team is located throughout the world, serving our customers in water treatment, purification, and reuse. In early 2015, I was appointed to fill a board vacancy and then elected to a four-year term beginning in 2016. I'm now here tonight asking for your support to be reelected. While on the board, I have held a myriad of leadership positions, including two years as vice president, and I am the current and two-year board president, both positions that were elected by my peers on the board. In addition to these roles, I have served the district through the Executive Advisory Council, Community Roundtable, Master Facility Planning Steering Committee, two architectural selection committees, the 2019 Bond Issue Committee, and the executive core team, among others. When reelected, I will continue the great work of our district and focus on three priorities. To continue to build upon the strong academic performance of our district, we are a destination district for families. The board must ensure that our strong academic performance continues, which will not only benefit our children, but also increase our property values in the community. Second, I will ensure continued financial stability. Our community expects strong financial leadership. The board's contract with the community to not increase expenditures beyond 2.5% on average for five years is non-negotiable. We must keep our tax rates competitively low while delivering upon academic achievement. And finally, we must construct new buildings, renovate the high school, and ensure that the design will impact academic performance. Ignoring or postponing this need will not only impact learning, but cost our community significantly more money in the long run. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I would first like to thank ASPO for organizing this event. I would also like to thank Dr. Myers for taking the time to moderate this evening. My name is Melissa Weiss, and I have served on the Sycamore School Board for four years. I want to be reelected to the school board to continue to advocate for academic excellence for all students, fight to keep the best teachers at Sycamore, and prepare Sycamore schools for success in the decades to come. I have lived in the district for 17 years. My husband Brian and I have two daughters, one who graduated from Sycamore last year and started college in August, and another who is currently in 10th grade. It was important to us to have our children attend public school. And when we began touring districts in the Cincinnati area, Sycamore stood out to us as a community that embraced diversity, excellence, and compassion. Before being elected to the school board, I was an active member of the Sycamore community: room parent, Girl Scout leader for eight years, director of some players for four, Meals on Wheels volunteer for 10 years, theater booster, the list goes on. So I know firsthand how important community involvement is to the success of our schools. As a board member, I'm a firm believer that fiscal responsibility and oversight is crucial for our district. I am committed to spend taxpayer dollars wisely. And during my tenure, the board renewed the Financial Parameters Resolution to the community. This resolution limited the growth of the general operating budget to no more than an annual increase of 2.5% through the fiscal year of 2021. Strict cost controls of the operating budget by the board has enabled us to keep that promise. I believe that academic excellence and achievement for our students should drive everything that we do in Sycamore. We should always be asking ourselves, how will this affect our students? Working collaboratively with our administrative team and building leaders, I have promoted giving more opportunities to students in the academic setting and supported innovative methods of teaching. I have visited every building in our district and met with teachers and students and observed the amazing learning that happens here every day. There are other areas that I've chosen to focus on as well, and I'm hoping to share some of those with you this evening: safety and security, mental health services, and communication with all stakeholders, to name a few. So thank you for being here, and I look forward to answering your questions.
I would also like to thank the Association of Sycamore Schools Parent Organization for hosting tonight's event and Dr. Myers for moderating. I'd also like to thank everyone here who's in the audience and everyone who's watching the screen version online. Really appreciate you taking the time to understand who the right candidates are. My name is Brad Commerford. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have been in the district since 2000, the year my oldest daughter started kindergarten. Like many of you here, we moved to the districts specifically because of the quality and reputation of Sycamore schools. I now have three daughters who have graduated from Sycamore: Meredith in 2013, Morgan in 2017, and most recently, Mallory in 2019. I could not be happier with the education that my daughters have received. This brings me to my reason for running. I'm fundamentally looking to give back and serve the community. I think two of the most important things to most people are their children and their money. The school board is entrusted with both. I could not think of a more meaningful way to contribute to the community than to serve on the school board. Even if you do not have a child in the Sycamore schools, and 70% of the district does not, everyone in the district wants to know that the money entrusted to the schools is spent wisely. My three priorities are: outstanding academics, Sycamore is consistently ranked in the top 10 school districts in Ohio, Sycamore is a destination district for many families. Number two: smart financial decisions. Effectively managing operating budget and capital expenditures. Number three: strong communication. I want to ensure we communicate effectively to all of the district, including the 70% who do currently have a student at Sycamore. I believe that I have very strong qualifications. From an educational background, I earned two degrees from Stanford University, a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering, and a Master of Science degree in engineering economics systems. From a work experience, I have worked for Procter &amp; Gamble for 24 years. I'm currently an Associate Director working in the global business services on IT innovation. I connect with VCs, startups, and partners to co-develop new-to-the-world solutions. My previous role at PNG was in global finance and operations. In this role, I led portfolio management process, guiding smart financial decisions on a $500 million annual spend on infrastructure and systems projects. Procter &amp; Gamble is well-known for leadership development and teamwork. I look forward to bringing both to the table as part of the Sycamore Board of Education. I have been a longtime community volunteer. I've been a coach for many years. In soccer, I coached on both GSSA and Cincinnati United. I served on the GSSA Soccer Board. I coached sack basketball for five years and SDSA softball for two years. I was elected Vice President of the Sycamore Band and Orchestra of Boosters and volunteered for three years in the big crew for the marching band. I've also spent eight years perfecting the art of hanging poly bottles at the high school for after proms and odd couple dances. Thank you, and stop my being slow.
We don't have the ability to have a microphone, so you guys will keep an eye on this out. And calling a little bit of an audible just to keep everybody... The questions are coming in. Please don't think that if you think of other questions, you can't submit them. So please, if you think of questions, please submit them. And the way the questions are coming in, each of you will be able to respond to each question that are raised. We'll just rotate the order in which we will address the questions. But why don't we say for the first person to respond, we'll do the two minutes. But for the second and third person to respond, we'll each do one minute in responding to the question, if that's okay with you three of you? I just think we might almost have dead air trying to fill. Okay, so we'll start... Because you're closest to me, we'll start with you first, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And so the question for you is, how do you plan to move our schools to A status on the state report card?
Ah, that's a great question. Well, as a board, we have chosen to focus on a couple of things. And one of those things is academic achievement. And we have worked closely to set specific goals, academic goals, for our superintendent, which then translates down to all of our buildings. We actually just had a presentation yesterday about all of the different activities that our building leaders are doing with our students to raise our district to the A letter grade. One thing I want to say about the state report card is the way in which those things are calculated are not always as straightforward as you may think. I'm happy to report that our performance index score actually went up this year to a 105.7. In 2018, we were ranked number 38 in the state of Ohio. In 2019, we have moved up to number 23. So the goals that the board has put in place for our administrative team is actually showing results on our state report card. We received all As on our value-added measures, which is a huge accomplishment. And we take seriously every single component that is on that report card. So working with our building leaders to have very focused plans with our students to increase their grades and their performance on test.
Sure.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of listening to Karen Neber in the last board session highlight the most recent report card. And I can tell you that what she had shared is moving in the right direction. The trajectory, as Melissa shared, is an increasing trajectory thanks to the efforts. I did want to say, though, that while I am for results, I think that we also need to be for growth. And from a growth standpoint, I want to take the time to talk a little bit about how the special needs impacts... The value of special needs impacts some of the report cards. I'm proud of what Sycamore has from a special needs program standpoint. I think you need to understand on some of these measures, like graduation rate, the fact that we have a strong special needs program impacts some of those measures. If you asked me to get ahead on those measures that we would want to sacrifice our special needs program, I would not want to do that. So I wanted to just put that on the table upfront. My daughter has been enriched by her experience with special needs at Sycamore and is pursuing a degree to teach special education at Clemson University. And I'll talk more about that next.
Thank you. So while the state report card is important, it's really just one piece of the academic measures that we look at in order to determine the success of our district. So while it's very important, I think we need to look at the broader scope of how we're going to increase academic performance. So the board takes that very seriously. And as Melissa said, we have specific goals in place to get us to what we believe will be an A district. However, the state keeps moving things around. And this year, they gave people As that didn't achieve the performance or have a performance index actually lower than what we have. So there's eight schools out there that got an A that had a lower performance index. So it's a moving target. Other things we've done, we've hired a curriculum director to really take a deep dive into our curriculum to improve the overall academic performance. And then we're also starting a strategic planning process, which will have measurable and accountable goals for the academic performance in the district. So I challenge you to look beyond just the A rating and look at the total academics of the district.
Thank you, all three of you. Staying on time, I like it. So, Mr. Commerford, we'll start with you for this one. The quality and motivation of teachers is essential for success in education. What are your plans on recruitment, retention, pay, and benefits for our teachers as the Ohio Teachers Retirement is being steadily cramped?
Those are last words.
Settling cramped.
Look, I think the heart and soul of any school district is the teachers. I think the school board is engaged in partnership with the administration. But I think together, they need to work as a team to enable the teachers. I am not privy to all of the information that my colleagues are up here on the most recent teacher negotiations. What I can tell you is I have had extensive experience at PNG with managing people. And what I can tell you is they need to love where they're working, and they need to know that they have support from the people that they're working for. I think we need to really show strong support for the teachers. And I would, if elected, make sure to work in conjunction as a team with the rest of the school board members and the administration to make sure that Sycamore is a district that teachers want to be at and will hate to leave. That's the principle I would operate with.
We have some of the best teachers in the state of Ohio. There's no doubt about that. And I've seen the impact they've made on my kids personally, as well as many other kids in the district. We don't have a problem with teachers leaving our district. Our teachers come here, and our teachers stay here. For every position we have open, we have a large number of applicants, which allows us to choose the best candidate possible for our kids. Our teachers are well-paid and well-compensated and supportive of the class users. And it's my goal to continue that. We must pay our teachers competitively. But we also must do that within the financial constraints of our budget as well. You know, I wish we could pay our teachers the highest in the state, but we physically can't do that. So I think it's important that we look at it from a taxpayer and community base as well, that we live within our means, but yet reward our teachers the best possibility that we can. We know that the longer they stay here, the higher they move up in their salary scales, and the higher they move up in comparison to their peers. So I think we're doing a great job. I think we'll continue to pay and competitively recruit our teachers.
Just to echo a couple of things that Mr. Ballen said. $55 million or 71% of our $77 million operating budget are devoted to student instruction and student support services. And that means our teachers. We need to make sure that we stay within our fiscal constraints that we have and make sure that we honor the commitment that we've made to the community to spend their tax dollars wisely. With that being said, we as a board look at the trends of any teacher or the trends of our teachers leaving our district and why they're leaving. It's a very small number. We are embarking on a conversation, just starting, about how can we continue to retain and find talented teachers to come to Sycamore? And that's an important thing that we want to keep doing. But, you know, when we go through negotiations with teachers, one of the things that I always say is I want to pay teachers as much as we can within our financial parameters.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Ballen, you can give the leadoff with this one. There is a parent group for parents of gifted students. The district wholeheartedly promotes this group while at the same time ignores seemingly the families of students with special needs. As a board of head member, how would you help rectify this situation?
So our Gifted Parents Program, while the majority is gifted parents, is open to any parents within the district. The GEAR program is not specifically excluding parents of non-gifted kids. As far as special needs parents, I think we have a fantastic program for special needs. We devote a lot of time, energy, and resources into our special needs programs. And it's very evident in the quality of education and the progression that we see in our special needs kids. You know, I've never thought about having a special needs parent organization. We do sit down with parents in the IEP process to work with them. But I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that we could look into as a board. We could perhaps even work as a Sycamore Advisory Commission project in order to come up with a parent support group as well. We have utilized the Sycamore Advisory Committee, I think, two years ago to work on special needs parents' IEP process. So I think it could be an extension of that project and looked into over the next year or so.
Yes, I'm very familiar with GEAR. I was involved in it when my children were younger. And I do want to say that I think that that's a very motivated group of parents who want to create additional opportunities for students, and not just gifted students, but students within the district. Like Mr. Ballen said, anyone is invited to come to those activities. I think it would be helpful to expand that if we could. One of the things that I've been proud of as my tenure on the board is to actually open up additional classes within our system of school to allow students to take a harder class. And that's not saying that they will automatically go into the gifted program. But I think that one of the things that's important is to give every student as much opportunity as we can to grow. So I would encourage anyone to attend GEAR programs and see if they like them. I don't think they're closed to everybody.
Special education is a passion for, as I mentioned before, for myself and my family. My daughter chose to attend Clemson University to study, to become a special education teacher. Because of the experiences that she had at Sycamore from grade school throughout in the Partners Program, doing adaptive PE. Clemson has a unique program that's what attracted her called Clemson Life. They actually admit students with special needs at the college program level. And those students live in the dorms, they have special classes, and they have jobs on campus. The reason I mention this is, on top of I think it's a great model for us to look at, is that Clemson Life, I learned, stands for "learning is for everyone." I think that's a really important principle for us to think about and understand. We need to meet the needs of those at the top, those in the middle, and those at the bottom of the organization. And we think about everything involved, it's got to include those with special needs.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. You get the leadoff with this one. Do you support moving back the starting times for the schools in the district?
That's a great question. We have received quite a number of inquiries from our community about start times. We are aware of some of the medical literature that is out there by the Academy of Pediatrics indicating that that is potentially healthier for students to have a later start time. We have actually charged our superintendent to do a study on this so that we can, as a board, evaluate it in the beginning of 2020. There are many things that we need to consider with changing a start time because it's not just moving it ahead an hour for high school students. There is a ripple effect that will happen with our transportation department and possibly additional costs that may be incurred with transportation needs. We also have to look to see how a later start time or an earlier start time for middle school students or elementary school students, would that actually work? We're also going to be asking our teachers as well what they think about that. So there's a lot of components to consider before we can make a decision about whether we are going to move to an earlier start time. But it is definitely on our radar.
I actually got this question as I was canvassing in the community, talking to people about what they're concerned. So I had the chance to reach out and talk to Frank about this particular issue. He shared with me, similar to what Melissa had shared, but gave me a little bit of additional insight that we don't want to solve this with a Band-Aid. If we're going to change start times, we don't want to change it by just a small amount. There's going to be enough disruption, hopefully, with the construction that's going on. And if we're going to make a meaningful change, we really need to do it and look at it. And I know it's on the radar to look at after the construction. It makes no sense to change things for construction schedule times and then change it later. So I know it's on the administration's radar screen. I think the studies are very interesting that have been shared with me. And I would think that this is already on the radar to be explored.
So I don't have an answer for you. I can't say whether I support it or don't support it. We don't have enough data yet to really make that decision. Yes, we've read the medical impact. We've read those studies. But there's also a piece that we don't know yet. And that is how it's going to impact parents and then impact our community. Simply changing the start time sounds easy, but it impacts busing. It impacts, you know, the time where parents can go to work. You know, before the board makes any decision, we have to have all the input. We will utilize the same approach that we have with master facility planning to get community engagement. We get our community involved and listen to our community prior to us making a decision. It's not about what I want. It's about what our community wants. And we have to listen to our community while also looking into the data. And we have to make informed, data-driven decisions to determine what's the best for our community and the best for our students.
For the next question, we get the leadoff from Mr. Commerford. How would you improve communications to the 70% who do not have children in the district? Recently read, not on Facebook, online, that many have not been aware of our master facilities plan, for instance.
Yeah, this is a... I'm glad you raised this one. It used to be, 20 years ago, everyone got their information from newspapers and television. I think today, it's a lot more social media. But specifically, what I've learned is there's more information being shared today on this application called Nextdoor. That's a very interesting application, and it's full of a lot of information. And I would have to say a lot of misinformation from time to time because it's not edited. I think one of the things we need to look at is, I would like to highlight a couple of things. There is this quality profile in Sycamore Pilot that go out to the entire community. I think these are excellent. I would want to applaud the district, Mallory, Von Bright, and those who produced this. These are excellent. But we need to think about social media communication. And we absolutely need to reach the 70% in a proactive way, specifically highlighting what we can do to use the facilities that we have. How are we publishing things like walking trails? How are we publishing things like theater events? Can we do a better job leveraging some of these newer social media techniques? Those are things I think, look, there's no silver bullet here, but we have got to address that as a priority.
Sounds really easy, but it hasn't been. We've looked at this for a number of years. And, you know, I would completely disagree that we'd need to put anything on Nextdoor just because the response that you get and the full of disinformation we have there. We've done a great job with communications. We get the information out, it's housed by the community. We're on Facebook, we're on Twitter, we have multiple mailings we've done to every single community resident. We can't get in the paper. For any of you who get the suburban press, all you see is Loveland, Loveland, Loveland. Doesn't mean we're not submitting articles. We just have to be more, we have to make a harder attempt to actually get them to publish the articles. We do email blasts where the community members can give us their email addresses so they can get invitations to events at the schools, as well as we've done multiple mailings. Master Facility Planning, I don't know the number, but I bet you there's been more than 20 complete mailings to the entire community over the last three years on the process. So we have the information, it's just a challenge because there's so many means that people are using to get communication to actually get that into reading.
I would say, I've thought a lot about this as it's one of the things that I'm passionate about. I think the first thing that the board did and the district did was hire an outstanding professional who's innovative and creative and a leader in the field, and that's Mallory Von Bright. She is all over the district, taking pictures, posting them on social media, like Mr. Ball said. But there are many ways to communicate. And I think that the 70% of our community that does not have children in the district, we try to reach through traditional mailings and other things like that. There's a lot of people in that group that are not necessarily on social media. But one of the other things that we're considering, and we've talked about a little bit as a board, is having some town hall meetings and inviting people to come to those to have conversations about things that are happening in our district. And that's something that I'd like to pursue more. The other thing that we'd like to do too is work with specific communities, whether it's homeowners associations or something like that, where we could have coffees and have board members come in and talk to them about what's going on in the district.
Thank you all. Mr. Ball, you lead off with this one. What is being done to address the climate crisis, both in the classroom and in new construction and remodeling? And is the board interested in taking a public stance on this issue?
So I don't speak for the board, I only speak for one person. You know, the board is aware of climate change. I'm a scientist, as I said in my opening remarks, I do a lot with water reuse and purification. And I know that the impact that industries and buildings are having on our environment today. I'll give you an example. When Vankel Dale was built, we decided to use geothermal energy to reduce the carbon footprint on the environment. We are aware of it. If given the opportunity to construct new buildings, we will construct buildings that are able to be LEED certified, buildings that are more efficient, use less energy, and also are more friendly towards the environment. As far as what the schools are doing, I can't speak for every single classroom. But I can tell you, you know, just this week, I worked with my seventh grade daughter on a project on the impact that industry is having on the environment, looking at the reduction of ozone, looking at the pollution of water. So, you know, it's not something that the district, from an educational standpoint, is shying away from. We are teaching in classrooms. My youngest daughter is working on a project-based learning project as well, looking at climate. So, you know, from a board standpoint, we are aware of it. And from an education standpoint, we are looking at it in classrooms as well.
Thanks. Let me highlight something because I think that, yes, the board is aware of that. And I don't need to repeat everything Mr. Ball said about if our bond issue passes and we are going to build new buildings, what we can do in those buildings to reduce our carbon footprint. We had a mom in Sycamore schools who led the most amazing grassroots effort to reduce, reuse, and recycle. And she was able to get this program in all of our schools. We did composting, and it was just amazing. It still continues today. But one of the things I wanted just to quickly highlight is in Sycamore, over the past eight years, we've participated in House Bill 264, which is an energy conservation program. And by improving lighting and HVAC and other things like that, we have saved the district over $10 million. This is by installing things like different light bulbs and other things in our buildings. So not only are we having a positive impact on the environment, but we're also saving money for the district that can be put back into the classroom.
This doesn't just make sense, it makes business sense. We have a number of these programs at P&amp;G and measures about how do we do things that drive a smaller carbon footprint. I would love to be on the board and share some of those ideas. It sounds like to me it's already on the idea list for new construction. That's terrific. I think there's so much that we could do here. And it's important for us to make sure that climate change is an integral part of what we do for many reasons. But I think it's definitely an area that the board should be engaged on, and it sounds like we are.
Terrific. Now, Ms. Weiss, you're leading off on this next one. Through the past few years, it has become harder to reserve facilities for community use. What is your opinion on how open or closed our buildings and facilities should be for community programs?
Oh, I think that that's a topic that we've talked about quite a bit. And we were developing the plan for the bond issue and retaining some of our buildings, parts of our buildings, our stadium at the junior high. We know that our buildings are in high demand, and I'm very open to having those open to the community. So I think whoever wrote that question, if I can talk to you after and see what problems you've been having, I would like to address that.
Mark, could you repeat the question, please?
Through the past few years, it has become harder to reserve facilities for community use. What is your opinion on how open or closed our buildings should be for community programs?
I think the building should be open for community use. The taxpayers are paying for the buildings. I will tell you, I've had children at the high school for the last 10 years, so I'm fairly familiar with being in that building. There was not a single day, and I was there at really weird hours on the weekends, that I didn't see it in use between the Boy Scouts, swimming, different sports activities. I believe if the community is investing $127.5 million, we absolutely need to make sure that the facilities that we build are open for the use. I would say I believe they are open for the use, and I believe they're being highly utilized. I think, back to the communication, I don't think people are aware of all of the uses that our buildings do have.
So I think the problem is not that, I think the problem is they're overused. Not overused, but they're used to the extent that it's hard to get in to use the buildings. You come to any of these buildings any night, and there's basketball going on, or volleyball going on, or soccer going on out on the field, or band events, or arts events, or clubs that are going on. You know, one of the things in master facility planning that we talked to the community about was ensuring that the community space did not decrease. Ensuring that we had the same number of gyms, you know, the same amount of community space in the new buildings because the board is aware that the community uses those spaces. The junior high, if we build a new junior high, we'll have a new auditorium, which can be rented out, not rented out, but reserved out by community groups to use that. Our current auditorium is not in the best state to be used. It's not used very often. We would like and invite the community in to use our new auditorium, use the junior high stadium, use the new stadium in the high school to the fullest capacity of the community. We want the community at these facilities, we want them using our walking tracks, we want them using as much as they can. So our buildings are open every night, and I invite you to come use them.
Mr. Comfort, you get the lead off with this one. What sets you apart from the other candidates? Simple, direct question.
I was expecting this one. Thank you. I want to just focus on one thing, strong financial leadership. I have had the experience at P&amp;G of leading $500 million worth of portfolio projects on an annual basis, managing capital and operating expense. If the district isn't trusted with $127.5 million through this bond issue, which I hope that it is, we need to make sure that we have strong fiscal stewardship. I said in my opening, two most important things to most people are their children and their money. There are going to be a lot of people who are not happy about, and I'm hearing from them, about how much money is being spent by the district. We need to make sure that we have strong financial stewardship. And I think I bring that to the table with my experience at P&amp;G. So financial leadership, I think, is what sets me apart as a candidate for this election.
I think there's a couple of things that set me apart. I had the experience, I have five years on the board, I have proven leadership to lead this district for academic growth. And we have had financial stability and leadership for many years within the district. I'm very proud of being on board that has kept our financial expenditures under 2.5% for the last five years. So from a financial leadership, the board has that, the board members have that. One of the things that really sets me apart is making decisions based on community input, listening to the community, listening to their thoughts and ideas, and then using firm data that we have today to back up the information and then make the decisions that's in the best interest of our students and our community.
What sets me apart from the other two candidates sitting on the panel? I'm a mother. I have a child in the district, one that graduated. I've demonstrated sound fiscal policies for the district and asked the tough questions of our administrators. I have four years' experience on the board, and I have a deep commitment to student achievement. I want to make sure that every student who leaves Sycamore believes that they can do anything they want to do and has been given that opportunity to try here. In addition to being passionate about something, I think I also bring an analytical mind to the situation and use data to help drive some decisions. The other piece, too, that I think separates me out is I'm willing to meet with anybody in the district and have a conversation about anything.
Thank you. Mr. Ball, you get this next one. What is an area that you believe is challenging Sycamore, and how would you solve it?
So I think there's a lot of areas that are challenging Sycamore today. We have mental health issues in our schools that are being addressed. You know, we have an increase in costs within our district. One of the things that if I had to pick one to really focus on for you today is we have so much data that's coming in on the performance of our students. We need to use that data, we need to analyze that data to make decisions on our curriculum and our academic growth and achievement and performance. Our teachers need to be able to teach. They don't need to be the ones that are analyzing data. They need to have data at their fingertips in order to personalize learning to every student and really be impactful for the students. And then beyond that, I think, you know, the facilities. I think if you look at our junior high and our middle school and our high school, we need, you know, the need is real, the need is now, and we need to make improvements in these buildings so that we can maximize the academic achievement while minimizing costs to our community.
I think there's two challenges that we face in our community and in our district. One is safety and security. And not that we've had any incidents at our district, thank goodness, but that is something that is on the mind of the board and of our administrators all the time. It is our responsibility to keep our students and our teachers and our staff safe. In this time, it is getting harder and harder to do that. You've probably noticed as you come into our buildings, there is a very extensive way that you have to get in our buildings now. You have to be buzzed in, you have to show ID, you have to get a badge. But this is all for the safety of our students and our staff. We have done things to mitigate that. In addition to having some things like that to get into our buildings, we also have active shooter trainings. It's just part of a reality that we live in right now. We also partner very closely with the Montgomery and Blue Ash Police Department. And we have a resource officer in both our high school and our junior high. So I think safety and security is a challenge that we are facing today and that we will face for a long time to come. But we are on top of it.
I agree with Melissa that safety and security is important. But I also agree with her that it's one of the areas we're doing quite well with. The area that I continue, as I'm talking with people, that I continue to be intrigued on how to solve is our ability to communicate to the 70%. I really do think we have really good communication that reaches within the people, within the taxpaying group that has students within the district. Once you have graduated out, or if you have students in parochial schools, what's important to them is their return on investment. And what's important to them is what can they get, what are they getting from the investment that they're making within the school district? I think our ability to reach them in ways that meet their needs and help them understand what we're doing is one of the areas for improvement that I see that we can do. I don't faint to say that this is easy. I agree with Paul when he says that Nextdoor is not an easy spot. But that's the spot where people are talking.
Ms. Weiss, you're leading off with this one. Creating new administrative jobs, such as curriculum director, pupil support, and director of student services, is this cost-effective, and how can we justify it?
Yes, thank you for that question. I think that one thing that the community should know is whenever we add administrative positions, that is something that the board votes on. And we have very long discussions about what that person is going to do and what value they are going to be adding to the district and for students. Our director of student services, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that that role is doing. And it actually goes to one of the challenges that we face in our district. And that is the mental health of a lot of our students. I'm sure you've read the articles that have come out recently about how many children are suffering from mental health concerns, whether it's anxiety, or depression, or anger management. We see this in our district. And we have taken a very proactive approach to that by partnering with Children's Hospital and Mind Peace to bring a mental health provider into every single one of our buildings. Our director of student services helps coordinate all of that. We also have an effort underway at the high school to take away the stigma about mental health with our high school students, which is called hashtag Speak Up Aids, where we're encouraging people, our students and staff, to share their experiences with mental health. We think that by talking about it, it helps. So when we add positions like that, it's for a very good reason.
Mark, could you repeat the question again?
For you, of course. Creating new administrative jobs, for instance, curriculum director, pupil support, and director of student services, is this cost-effective, and how can we justify it?
I don't know that I know the answer to that question, Mark. What I will say is that I think that the, when I look at the, I got as part of my input the organizational chart for the administration staff. I think that the board works together with the administration. I think the administration looks at how to best organize to deliver the best possible support for the teachers. To me, the most important asset, in P&amp;G, we have a saying, is our employees are the most important asset that we have. I think at the school level, the teachers are the most important asset that we have. And everything should be lead to how to support them to do their best job. The administration should be supporting the teachers, and the board should be working in conjunction with the administration. On that specific question, I would need to get more information to be able to answer that.
Thank you.
You know, I would, going third, I can repeat everything Mrs. Weiss said, but I would echo a lot of her comments on the student support services. It's important that our students are available to learn when they're in the classroom. Having a director of student services that can oversee the mental health aspect of our student population is critically important. As far as, when the board looks at the addition of positions, we look at maintaining our contract with the community that we're going to stay within our budget guidelines. And we take that very seriously. And we only add staff when staff is needed. The director of curriculum is a very important position in our district. She is someone that has the ability to look at the curriculum that's being delivered in each and every classroom, the impact that's having on students, looking at data and seeing is our curriculum really impacting our students and making a change and helping every student reach their full potential each and every day. So I think when you look at these two particular positions, I think they're completely cost justified. And I'll tell you, as a board member, even if they weren't cost justified, the impact that they're having on our students is immeasurable from a cost standpoint. from a cost standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Conover, for your lead off for this next one. What are your thoughts on the current bond issue that will be voted on in November?
I am voting for the bond issue and I ask myself two questions. Is there a need and is now the right time? As I've toured the buildings, I believe very sincerely that there is a need. Junior high was built in 1926. When you look at the cost of maintaining a school of that age versus the cost of replacement, it makes a lot of sense. More importantly, I think now is the right time, and I say that from a financial market standpoint. The bond rates you may have heard in the news are inverted. What that means is the yield on a 10-year bond is lower than the yield on a two-year bond. If you're an investor, that's terrible. If you're borrowing money, that's great. If you're especially borrowing money for long term, it's excellent. So whether or not we need to do the building now or five years from now, now is actually the right time to strike the bond. I liken this to your decision when you make it for your house to refinance your home. If the interest rates go down, it's the good time to refinance your home. You pay less money overall. The bond rates are very attractive and so I think the need is real and I think now is the right time.
I would echo Mr. Conover's thoughts. I am 100% supportive of the bond issue. I've been very active on the board, probably the most active of all board members, in looking at the need, looking at the community engagement, and participating in master facility planning. As Mr. Conover said, the need is real, the need is now. Not only are our buildings old, they are not adequate to compare our students for today and for tomorrow. From a financial standpoint, it is not in the best interest of the community to continue to put money in these buildings. We can put new HVAC systems in, but we can't change the size of the classrooms. We can't make flexible learning spaces and we can't deliver the academic competence that's needed for our students today. And now is the time. If we wait, an increase in just 5%, 0.5% in interest rates is going to cost this community $13 million. An increase in 1% on an interest rate is going to cost this community almost $30 million. Construction costs are going up by 5% to 6% every year. Delaying this one or two years could have an impact of cost of over $20 million to this community. The need is not going away. The need is real and the best time to do this is now.
Okay, well, they gave you all the financial things, so I'm not going to echo those because all of the things that both Mr. Conover and Mr. Ballant said are true. Interest rates are all time low, construction costs will rise. I think one of the things that I'd like the community to understand is the diligence by which the board and the administration has gone through to get to the process to put this bond issue on the ballot. We did in 2010, we did an evaluation of all of our buildings, we did it again. This has been at least a three-year process that I've been involved with in assessing our buildings. I want to say that there is only so much that you can do to maintain a building. We have very, very good technicians. We have people who, we take very good care of our buildings, but at some point, the building has to be replaced. The average life of a building, a school building in Ohio is 45 years. The junior high, as you know, parts of it date back to 1926. So I think the other thing that I am obviously for the bond issue, I think the other thing that we want to talk about too at some point is how we can expand our early childhood education. We have plans to do that. And one of the other things that we want to explore is all-day kindergarten for all of our students at some point in the future.
Mr. Grandl, you're up for this one. How would you handle the request if approached by an individual or a special interest group?
I assume you didn't know that you have easy questions. You know, as a city board member, we get requests all the time from community members. I've never been approached by a special interest group, so that makes the questions a little bit different. But, you know, any request that comes into the board is handled appropriately. We have a procedure and process in place that each board member participates in. And really, the request first goes to the person or management level that's really operating that. So if it's something academic, that request is going to go to Mr. Forsthoff or Mrs. Neber. They may disseminate that down to a building principal for that matter. And you're going to work with the person who's closest to the situation and has the most information. You know, for a community member to request something of me that's happening in Sims Elementary, I don't have a good answer for you. The people that are living and breathing in that building every day are going to have the answers. But we have a procedure in place for resolution that, you know, after they've talked to a building principal, they're not satisfied with the results or they want more information. It's then escalated up the chain to the next appropriate level, whether it's assistant superintendent or superintendent, and then it comes up to the board. So we do have a procedure in place to handle any requests or information. And as far as a special, as far as a special interest group, you know, the board would really have to do their research and find out the background of what a special interest group is asking for when it gets to it. I'm sorry I don't have more information, but it's something we've never, never really had to deal with.
Just to echo what Mr., I was like thinking, gosh, what kind of special interest group could that be that the person's asking about? But what I'd like to say is we do have a chain of command that we actually take very seriously on our board. So as soon as, if we received a request like that, that would just go up through the proper channels. I think sometimes when parents approach me and ask me questions or have a concern about something, the first thing I'll always say is, well, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal of that building? It's not our place as board members to go and try to resolve that particular issue. When we see trends in our district, when we have more than one parent coming and telling us something, we again kind of go through the chain of command and let our administration know. So we are very routinized with our policies and it would just go through the chain of command. It's kind of a boring answer, but that's how it would work.
I don't know that I have any more to add from what Paul and Melissa have shared on this topic. What I would say in general is I think anytime you're faced with a decision, it's important to understand both sides of the equation. And I think that listening, Paul highlighted that, is an important characteristic of any board member, making sure that you can weigh and measure what is being said and valuing everyone's input. There's never going to be anything where everyone agrees on. I think you need a board member with a temperament to listen, respect, and take in the feelings that everyone who is sharing with you. I wholeheartedly agree with the chain of command comments. Is it actually one thing, one of the things that Jean Staubach coached me on when I reached out to ask her about her experience on the board? She was very, she said her nickname was Teflon, and which I thought was very humorous, but she said it's important to really understand and respect the chain of command within the schools.
Ms. Wise, you are leading off for this one. Creating a positive culture is key to any community. This is true at the district level, in the classrooms, and in our own homes. Describe your ideal culture that you will emulate in your role on the board.
Okay, I want to take that question and talk about how we, some of the things that we're doing in our district, that hopefully I do in my role on the board as well. We have spent a lot of time speaking with our building leaders about two things that they're doing in their buildings that have a huge impact on their communities, meaning their school communities, with their students and their teachers. And the first one is called at the acronym of PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior and Interventional Supports. And what that is, is it creates a common language in the school that everyone can understand about how to behave and what is expected of you. And some of these programs started in our elementary schools, such as Peace Builders. And what it does is it creates a community where everyone behaves by hopefully the same rules and students are rewarded for these positive behaviors. What we have seen is bullying incidents in our school and harassment incidents in all of our schools have gone down over the past five years because of this type of environment that our teachers and staff are creating. The other thing that we do, because Sycamore is such a diverse district, we are very in tune with culturally responsive practices. We devote professional development for our teachers and staff to participate in simulations of what some of our students experience. We just had one where some of our teachers participated in a simulation of what it's like to live in poverty. And doing these things makes our teachers and our educational assistants and other people who interact with our students have a little more understanding of what they're going through.
I would have two different words. One I share already, and that's like the acronym of learning is for everyone. I would want a culture where the board was learning, where the administration was learning, where the teachers were learning, and the students were learning. Students from all aspects of the spectrum, from the highly gifted, they need to be learning, from the core students, middle students, they need to be learning, and the those on the bottom, everyone needs growth. And I would put not just the students, staff, administration, learning is for everyone, I think, is a theme. The second one is teamwork. I would want to be in a culture where it's not about one person or me, it's about we. How do we succeed together? I think it's really important to have team, and teamwork delivers results.
So from a board standpoint, I think the idea of culture is that we need to listen and be respectful to all board members and administration. We need to respect opinions and cultures of everybody. We need to communicate effectively amongst each other and with our community. We need to seek input from everybody and we need to listen to that input. We need to be available to the community and we need to lead the district as a team that's all focused on the same goal, and that is achieving academic performance for our students. As a board, we need to praise the administration when appropriate and we need to work with them to make improvements. I think it needs to be a top-down culture of positive reinforcement and positive and effective communication.
Thank you. Mr. Conover, you're leading off for the next one. On what educational issues at the state level do you believe the local Board of Education should take a leadership position?
You know, I'll have to say, I do not have the same experience on this that someone on the current board would have, but what I would say is, what I would like to understand more is, and I do believe Beth does an excellent job on this and John has done an excellent job on this, is how do you, how do we make sure that the state funding and the state taxes, that Sycamore is not disbenefited by the financial makeup of our district versus the other districts in the state? I want to make, I would want to make sure that the funding that we get or that we receive is a fair appropriation to what other districts are getting. But I will have to say, I do not have the back, I will fairly admit, I do not have the backbone on this topic.
I think there's two issues at the state level that the board needs to continue to focus on, and that is the local report card and fair funding, as Mr. Conover was talking about. The state provides Sycamore about $600 per student. The remainder is paid from local taxes. Private schools in our districts are funded at $1,200 per student from the state. The district was financially based on tangible personal property tax. When this was phased out, we were promised to be made whole. This has never happened. We work with our legislators on an ongoing basis to be the voice for Sycamore in order to achieve fair funding. Fair funding was actually put into the current Dianna budget. Unfortunately, it was line item vetoed by Governor Dewine. Just last week, I spoke with our newest state Senator Bill Blessing. He will be on the education committee at the state level. He is aware of the unfairness in the state funding and promises to work with Sycamore to ensure that our voice is heard. Beth Weber, our treasurer, continues to work with a group called Alliance to advocate for fair funding within the district. As you can imagine, the difference between what we receive and what the private schools receive, that's coming out of the taxpayers' pockets. That's me, and that's you, and then it's all the whole community.
I would echo Mr. Ballant's response, fair funding and the state report card. I think one thing that the community should know is how involved we are as a school district with our legislators and having these conversations. We also participate on work groups and other things that actually push forward the agenda of Sycamore. The elimination of TPP, the tangible personal property tax, has really affected our district. In 2016, the phase out of this revenue source began with a cut of $1.4 million to our budget. And by the end of the phase out of the TPP in the fiscal year 2023, our district alone lost $9 million to our operating budget. That's significant. That's 12% of our budget. I can't say enough about Mrs. Weber, our treasurer, who does more than what you think a treasurer would do. She's very active on these committees to put forward the opinions of our district, as is our superintendent. The other area that I would focus on is the state report card. There was some movement this summer to do a complete revamp of that, and unfortunately, I don't think that that's moving anywhere right now, but we're hoping to get that back on the table.
Ballant, you have the next one. In your view, what has the school district done well in the last five years and where has it fallen short?
Some of the things that we've done well, from a financial standpoint, we've continued to live within our budget and the commitment that we made to the community. We have strong financial stability and leadership, and we do well from a forecasting standpoint to make sure any new program, any new position falls within our budget. Some of the other things that we've done extremely well include inclusion and diversity. We've done extremely well by looking at the needs of the whole child, bringing mental health initiatives into school. Our special needs program has continued to be top-notch, not only in this area, but in the state. We're on the leading edge of educational methods such as project-based learning and innovation lab, and we're taking a personalized learning approach to ensure that our students achieve their highest potential. I think we've done a great job by providing a safe learning environment for our students and preparing our students for college and career shows, college and careers in military service. You know, some of the things that I think that we have fallen short on, I think some of the barriers that prevent, that I think there's still some barriers in place that prevent opportunities for all students to be pushed higher and pushed farther along in their educational process. I need, I think we need to focus on all learners, moving not just the top students or the bottom students, but the middle students as well to reach their full potential. We need to look at all subgroup of students and see what it takes to increase their academic learning. And then I think we need to work on a definition of what our values and mission statements are, which we're currently engaged in our strategic planning process.
I think some of the strengths of our district and some of the things that we've done well as a board continue to be our fiscal management and spending our taxpayer dollars wisely. I also think that we offer so many academic opportunities to our students to explore. A couple of the areas that I think that we can do better is communicating with our empty nesters and setting up some type of a system by which we can communicate with them on a regular basis and be very accessible to them in the district. I think one of the things that we're looking towards, as Mr. Ballant talked about in a previous answer, is there is a lot of data that is coming at our school district, all school districts, at a very fast pace. And one of the things that we are working toward is how to get a better handle on that data so that we can make better decisions, not better, better decisions in how we are implementing changes in the classroom. And those take some time. And so I think those are two areas that we can work on in our district.
I'd like to echo Paul's comments on private-based learning and innovation lab. I think those have been excellent additions to the district. I would like to say that I think there is one initiative that we've launched at P and G that I would love to see how we can leverage, and it's about neurodiversity. We talk about diversity in many different ways. We've just started a program where we specifically hire, are hiring. We've just started a program where we specifically hire, are hiring people with autism to do coding for P&amp;G. It's an exceptional program, and it's one that I would like to see how we could, you know, tap in a pipeline for how we could bring that to life for our Sycamore families. Actually, one of the Sycamore graduates from 2017 is one of our first hires at P&amp;G. We had four hires to this neurodiversity program. Noah Pittinger, I'm very proud of him. I, he started on Monday of this week, and I welcomed him to P&amp;G. It's terrific that we think about diversity in many different ways. You know, we, there's many that are known, but neurodiversity is a new topic, and I think it's an important topic.
Thank you. And Ms. Weiss, you get our next question?
Oh, yes, okay.
One more.
Yeah.
If a biological boy is suffering from gender dysphoria, should they be allowed to be on sports teams with and compete against biological girls and use their locker rooms and bathrooms?
Okay, can you say that one more?
Sure. If a biological boy is suffering from gender dysphoria, should they be allowed to be on sports teams with and compete against biological girls and use their locker rooms and bathrooms?
Okay, don't have a very specific answer on the participation in sports teams, but let me just say something about using the bathroom. All I want to make sure is that they wash their hands. I honestly, honestly don't care, I honestly don't care what bathroom they use, just wash your hands. In terms of the sports questions, I think that that would have to probably be a board discussion. I think because we are a very inclusive community, and we are a diverse community, we know that we have students who have, who identify, who are born biologically male but identify as women and vice versa. I think we have to embrace them like we would any student and come up with a solution that is good for everyone.
I think the first and foremost word we need to do is comply with the laws. Those laws are changing. I think many times for the better, but those laws, absolutely, the board's responsibility is to make sure we're compliant with the law of the state of Ohio and the federal laws as they might exist on this topic.
You know, I would agree that we have to follow the laws, but I also think, you know, that we have to look at both sides of this. You know, we have to understand the transgender side of it, and we also have to look at the impact that it's going to have on the rest of the student population. As a father of two daughters, do I want a biological boy showering with my two daughters? I do not. I think that by the school offering private facilities and private bathrooms is probably in the best interest of both parties. I'm sorry, I just don't feel that it's appropriate for boys to be in girls' locker rooms and girls' bathrooms. As far as sports teams, I think that's a more difficult question. You know, there's strength issues that can play into safety issues for all players. So I think it's something that we need to be looked at. We would have to talk to experts and look at research, and it's probably an issue that will be before us sooner than later. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I think it's, I think we would have to look at the research, follow the laws, make the best interest for the entire community, not just the individual.
Thank you. And now we're going to move into closing statements, and we'll start with Mr. Comerford, because you are up next.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I would like to repeat my thanks to the Association of Sycamore Schools Parent Organizations for hosting tonight's forum, and thank you Mark for being our moderator. I really appreciate you spending your evening here with us. Most importantly, I'd like to thank everyone in the audience and everyone watching online. I really do appreciate the opportunity to be here. I would like to close with my campaign promises. I have four. One, I promise to provide strong financial leadership to ensure that Sycamore continues to deliver the standard of excellence that our community expects. In my 24th year career at P&amp;G, I have had the opportunity to learn and apply strong financial decision-making. I look forward to bringing that skill and capability to Sycamore Board. I promise to listen to both sides of any issue before making any decision. I promise to be a team player that is results-focused. And I promise to work to build consensus. Consensus starts with effective communication. The most important part of communication is listening. At P&amp;G, we have a saying, "Seek first to understand and then to be understood." I have been applying this principle throughout my career. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to build strong community relationships as a board member. I humbly ask for your support on November 5th.
What I commit to you tonight is that I will do my best to listen and be a voice for our community to continue to drive high academic performance and growth. I have and will continue to hold our administration accountable and to maintain our tax rates as low as possible. I have been proud to represent our community and proud that we have been able to grow and accomplish academically while maintaining our tax rates such that we are 20 out of 25 in Hamilton County and neighboring districts. I'm proud to be a member of the board that continues to set our budget within our five-year non-negotiable contract with the community. My name is on that contract, and as long as I am on the board, there will not be another operating levy before the five years is up. And I promise to do everything possible to extend that operating levy beyond five years. When re-elected, I will ensure that we have a parent voice on the board. If I'm not re-elected by May, we will only have two board members who have children in our district, and two years after that, it will be down to just one. While the voice of the whole community is important on the board, parental representation is vital. It becomes too easy to cut programs and offerings because there is no personal impact to you, your peers, or your social groups. Great things are happening in our district. Academic performance, as measured by the state of Ohio, has increased our school district to 23rd out of 608 public schools. We're ranked in the top 10 in the Mid-Tory Court in the state of Ohio. Our MAP tests have placed those schools in the high-growth, high-achievement quadrant. We have great teachers. We've achieved much over the last five years I have been on the board, but there certainly is room for improvement. I have the proven experience and leadership to continue to lead this district to soar even higher. In closing, our democracy was founded on the principle of the power of the people to choose their representation at even the school level. Tonight, I hope that I have showed you my vision on where we can go, demonstrated my abilities to lead us there. I feel we are at a critical state where continuity of the board is important. On November the 5th, I ask for your vote for proven leadership, for experience, for someone dedicated to our district, for apparent voice on our board, for commitment to financial stability, for accountable academic performance and continued growth, for designing and building new buildings for the future of our aviators for many years. I humbly ask for your vote for myself, for Sycamore Board of Education. Thank you.
Why would someone run for school board? In the past four years, our school board has done some amazing things that I'm proud to be a part of. Whether it be spending taxpayer dollars wisely, presenting a vision of our district for decades to come, creating academic opportunities for students to achieve their full potential, supporting wellness and mental health services, ensuring the safety of our students and staff, and communicating with our constituents. These are highlights for me and part of the reason why I serve on the board. But when I think about what makes me want to continue to do this, and what it all boils down to, the answer for me is crystal clear: it is the people. I have been to each of our buildings and have met with staff that I have trusted with my own children. I have talked with custodians, educational assistants, administrative staff, and everyone in between, and I've had the fortune to spend time with our students, which is really the biggest reason of all. Our students drive every decision that I make. I know that our students are the future, and I want to ensure that we are preparing them in the best way possible. It is my commitment that every graduate leaves Sycamore feeling valued and respected, that they become a lifelong learner, and that they believe in their ability to succeed in whatever they pursue. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share my experience of serving on the Sycamore Board of Education and why I want to continue to make impactful change for our students. Lastly, I want to leave you with a story tonight that I hope inspires you because it inspires me every day. As the board lays on for student achievement, I've had the privilege of visiting our schools and interacting with students and teachers. Two years ago, I was visiting the junior high. They made a makerspace right off of their cafeteria called the Launchpad, and in that makerspace, they have 3D printers, creative art supplies, these little electrical kits where students can learn about electricity and coding. One eighth-grade student named Matt spoke with me about how much he loves coming to this space during lunch to tinker with these electrical kits. He showed me what he had created and how he and a couple of other students were collaborating on a bigger project. I asked him what he liked about this space, and he said to me, "Mrs. Weiss, I just love doing things with my hands and thinking about how things work." He went on, and this is an A grade, remind you. "I think it was Benjamin Franklin who said, 'Tell me, and I forget; teach me, and I may remember; involve me, and I learn.'" That is why I am on the school board at Sycamore. Sycamore is a school district known for diversity, excellence, and compassion. I hope to strengthen these pillars for future generations of Sycamore aviators. I hope you consider voting for me on November 5th. Thank you. Good night.
I want to thank the candidates, and I want to, could we please give them all a round of applause? Thank you guys for being here, and those of you watching online who should have been here. But I think, please, if I can give you a homework assignment, I've been a teacher for way too long, there are so many things at the state and federal level that impact this district more than you know. Please be involved just as much in Columbus and DC as you are here tonight to help the board members, whoever they will be, be able to do their job and support their community. Thank you all.
On behalf of ASPO, I'd like to thank all of you for being here also this evening, for your participation, for your questions. I'd like to thank Mr. Myers for being here again, for Shafir, and for our candidates, for all of them being able to be in attendance today. As you've heard, this, the video for this will be posted online either tonight or tomorrow. It'll be, unfortunately, we didn't get it live, but it is all recorded. I'll have to upload it most likely to my YouTube account, and then we'll be able to have, hopefully, the district to be able to disseminate that so that your friends, family, or whoever you want to see this forum, be available for them. So thank you very much.